Gonna be here today or not, or?
And unfortunately, we can't change anything on our agenda because it's a special meeting.
That's what I thought. Because it's a meeting, so we can't, can't, uh, so I s- I mentioned, I says, well, one else, you know, I have a written comment to send to him.
Yeah.
And then, why I said send it to the auditor.
Yep, yep, that's what he needs to do. Yep.
Well, I'll.
Put a written comment into the auditor and then.
I'll, I'll try to get a hold of him, you know, tonight or something and let him know that, uh.
Yeah, because we're still in that thirty day.
Right.
Frame right now.
Right.
But he'd want to get it done pretty soon.
Yeah, that was the deal, so it would, you know, if thirty days aren't up, then, uh, yeah.
Yeah. Did, um, Travis get a hold of you and let you know? Okay.
Yeah. Tony's gonna be here by ten.
(laugh) That's end of story, right?
Is that the day, uh, that must be the, the motion that you adjourned at ten o'clock? Well, Jim won't be here today.
We're gonna take a.
He's gone?
Recess until Travis returns.
Great.
Yeah.
And Marvin's not coming today, right?
That's what I heard.
Yeah, so it's just us.
Control yourself there.
Yeah, we're having a corner.
Gene, Gene, control yourself, please.
I know.
Oh, and cra- congratulations on the, uh, election results, Gene.
Yeah.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
Morning, Sam.
Hey, good morning.
So, uh, yeah, Jim is at home, so he won't be here. He's got COVID.
Jim is at home.
Elders?
Oh, yeah.
So we won't have.
That's why I wasn't at the June meeting.
So he won't be here now.
Oh, really?
I said that already. I tested positive the day before, so I wanted a home test. So then the next morning, Wednesday morning, I did it again. I tested positive again, so I called Travis, said, well, I better not show up, you know, people will lose their cookies. But I'm vaccinated.
Also, it's.
So I don't have to quarantine, and I don't have to wear a mask. It's just recommended. But if you haven't been vaccinated, then you gotta quarantine and you gotta wear a mask. Oh, well, they say you're supposed to.
If you've tested positive, you're supposed to quarantine even if you're vaccinated, right?
Okay.
No, not anymore.
Oh, really?
Even if you test positive?
Yep.
Right.
Really? Mm-hmm, because you're older if you're tested, I mean, vaccinated.
Right. I don't know how any of this has worked the whole time.
Didn't we used to?
Right, I know, I know.
Didn't we used to go get like, uh, how do we say it? Anyway, we vaccinated our cattle. We didn't vaccinate ourselves. We went and got immunized.
True.
Now we have vaccinated humans.
Yeah. Make it, Gene, make it simple. Wow.
Travis, forget.
So we were overseas. Got all these information. You go to Germany, you gotta wear like a P P two P mask or something. You go to Austria, they got, uh, you gotta have a COVID nineteen mask and all these. We get over there, there are fewer people wearing masks over in Europe than there are in America. Nobody had a mask on. We were never asked to put a mask on, and we were never asked for our vaccination cards.
Really? Because I remember, was, anyways, you were answering, you were saying, well, we have to get this special mask or whatever.
Yep, yep, we had to get all them because that's the information we got when you get to Germany.
Right.
We got there, nobody had a mask on, and we weren't asked. The only time we had to show our, uh, no, we didn't get to have to show our card. We had to be tested and negative to come back to my own country. Where I was born and I'm a citizen. I, I think then the, the go around there is, because I had a, I have a high school friend who, they were in Italy, and he tested positive. Five days later, he tested positive again. They flew to London to, uh, um, Canada, uh, north of, uh, Vancouver. Flew to Vancouver, rented a car, drove to Seattle, got on a plane, flew in. Because you can drive across border without being tested.
It's just so crazy.
It is. It's so, it's beyond stupid.
Yeah.
Mexico has no restrictions whatsoever, so same thing. Fly to Tijuana, they shuttle you up to San Diego. You can take a shuttle from the Tijuana Airport to the San Diego Airport, get on a plane, fly away. But now the U.S. dropped that. You don't have to be tested. You don't have to test naked.
Right.
Wow, what a country.
Yeah.
Sounds confusing.
So I was prepared, but when we were over there, we did test it. One of us would've tested positive. I'd have called my travel agent and said, flies to Tijuana. Tijuana, have a tequila and drive home.
Just don't go outside your hotel.
What's that?
I said, just don't go outside your hotel when you're in Tijuana. That'd be no problem down there.
I, I blend right in.
How is your Spanish?
Dos serves a.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Two beers.
I'm good.
You asked two beers. Por favor, are you gonna say please or not?
Or whatever. Antequila.
The translator.
I did that when I was overseas. I type it in and then show it to them.
Had to do a whole intake with one of my people on Google Translate because I cannot speak that well in Spanish. He cannot speak that well in English, so we just had to go back and forth.
Had a gal, there was about, what was it, four or five gals. We were at a castle and they were walking one way or the other, and then she just, she, like, one gal looked at me and she said, you know, she's like, and she goes, hey, and I went, yeah, you can do it. She put it, I go, easy. Then she laughed, and I go, what, what was wrong with my German? And she said, then she told me it wasn't, because I learned easy meaning a little.
Yeah.
And she went, no. Uh, how'd she say it again? She goes, um, I forget how she said it. And I went, oh, so it's supposed to be like beast or something. And she goes, yes.
Oh.
But she could speak English, so then I, they wanted me to take a picture of them, so I took a picture.
That was nice.
But she corrected my grammar. One thing in, in German, everything's got a specific pronoun. All nouns have a specific, uh, no, all nouns have a specific gender.
Oh.
You don't say, like, um, you don't refer to your car as he, she, and it. It's does, like, does car or whatever. It car. It's never, never he, she, or. Where in English, we'll, we'll say, yeah, we'll re- reference like our car as a he or a she. Not German.
I just know when they, when they count with their hands, they do like, this is three.
What?
Oh, wait, like, they count differently with their hands?
Oh. Oh, I, I can count in.
Hi, Dan.
German, too. Always got to think. Okay, can't mix it up with Spanish. I can count in Spanish and German.
I can go to twenty in Spanish. That's it.
I can make it to ten. That far, I know I can make it.
Okay, well, call the regular Mercer County Commission meeting to order. We have, uh, Alice has the role. I had to think there for a minute. We have the agenda in front of us. Are there any, uh, additions to the agenda?
We can't make any additions because it's a special meeting, correct?
Yep, we can't.
Uh, we do, uh, have an update, though, here because Jim will be out, so there will be no maintenance, and then also Darwin will not be coming in today.
Oh, okay. So the ten and the ten fifteen are off?
Correct.
The night. Okay, one more time, the what, the nine thirty and the ten?
The ten and the ten fifteen.
The ten and the ten fifteen. Okay. I think I still need a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll move to accept the agenda with the, uh, deletions and.
I'll second.
Okay. Wayne, how do you vote?
I'll vote aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Jean, aye. Minutes of the June fifteenth meeting?
We also want to make a correction on the minutes here. Uh, Dawn mentioned that she would like to take off the, Dawn suggested, and just have the commission, who suggested the county ask for thirty day extension, respond to that case.
Where's this at?
Oh.
Seconds back in the second.
Last paragraph.
Yeah, that probably would be.
And we were, we were gonna meet with Dawn about it.
Remove, uh.
Remove Dawn's.
Dawn suggested it.
Down.
Input.
Commission.
Commission?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other corrections to the minutes? Any none? Do I have a motion to approve as amended?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
What?
With the.
Do I have a second?
With the amendment, yeah.
I'll second.
Wayne, how do you vote?
I'll vote aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Jean, aye.
Well, we have no.
No bills today?
Yeah, no bills.
Really?
May sheriff's fees. Do I have a motion to approve? We'll go down to other business. May sheriff's fees. Do I have a motion to approve the may sheriff's fees?
I'll make a motion to approve the may sheriff fees of twenty-three thousand, four hundred and eleven dollars and thirty cents.
Do I have a second?
Second, Ed.
Liza, how do you vote?
Aye.
Marvin? Ah, Wayne, sorry.
I'll vote aye.
Jean will vote aye. I'm glad that Wayne is sitting way at the other end of the table.
Yeah, so am I.
Sorry, Wayne.
That's all right.
Okay, may court fees. Do I have a motion to approve the may court fees?
So move, Mr. Chairman, forty.
Have a second?
Forty amount of eight thousand, uh, two hundred and eleven dollars and. No, that wasn't right, was it?
It's eight thousand, two hundred and eleven and eighty-three cents, correct?
There we go.
Yeah. Yeah, it's not eighty-two thousand.
Okay.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Wayne?
I'll vote aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Jean votes aye. May recorder fees of six thousand, four hundred and twenty-three dollars. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the may recorder fees of six thousand, four hundred and twenty-three dollars.
Wayne, or do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Liza, how do you vote?
Aye.
Wayne?
I'll vote aye.
Jean, aye.
I'm gonna screw, I'm screw up here some more. That's in my head now.
Boy, do I have to make a mental note to call you by your correct name. Okay, hook line and sinker liquor license application. This is just a annual renewal? Correct?
Yes.
Any discussion?
See, is that a off, off, on sale type deal or? There's a sale on there?
Application for alcohol beverage license, Mercer County. I'm sure it's for off sale. I don't think it'd be for on sale, because I.
Right.
Yeah, it's just the.
Off sale beer.
There we go.
Annual, yes, right here. Type of license requ- requested, off sale beer. Any further?
Also move to accept the, uh, uh, liquor license application from Hook Line and Sinker, or I believe it's off sale.
Yes. Off sale beer.
I'll second.
Any further, well, now there should be discussion. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Wayne?
I'll vote aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Jean will vote aye. I got approved. Uh, fair board allocation. I take it that's for their annual.
I think that was for that extra five thousand dollars that they wanted.
Right, and we were saying originally, we thought that they were allocated forty-five thousand, but, um, I put it on one page, because it shows that they were approved for fifty thousand this year.
Oh.
I did talk to Rick again, and he asked, well, even if they were, um, allocated the fifty, if they could request another five thousand on top of that, but going through with the girls, I don't see where we could come up with another five thousand if they wanted to put it in their budget, which I told Rick for next year, then.
Right.
We could do that, but.
So they, yeah.
They haven't used anything out of that fund, but I believe we just submitted a check to them like, oh, right before the fair times.
Is this for this year's fair?
Correct.
Yes.
Since he was doing all the.
Would have that not been in last year's budget?
Correct.
Yep, and he thought it was forty-five, but actually it was fifty.
Yep.
Is what Sam is saying. And so he was asking, when he was here that one time, for an extra five thousand.
Right.
So there's, okay, get, get me straight on this. Is there any action we need to take, or is this just a informational?
Before, when he was asking for the extra five thousand, there possibly could have been if we were to choose to grant him that extra five thousand, but we had tabled it to say, we want to check to see where our monies are at, to see if we can even do that.
Correct, okay.
And that's what that's being brought back for right now, but that's when we originally thought it was only forty-five.
And actually, they have fifty then, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
I don't see.
If we have no interest in changing that, we don't have to take any action. They're just gonna get their fifty thousand.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yep.
With the understanding of if they choose that they would feel that they need more for next year, they would have to put that in their potential budget for this.
How does the rest of the commission feel? Are we okay?
Yeah, thanks for the sheet. I mean, it's, yeah, it's pretty spelled out. Like you said, I thought, I thought they had forty-five, and the choices, they have fifty, and, and, uh, they're gonna have to work with that and drive on.
I concur with Wayne.
Okay. Then we're done with that line item.
Yeah.
Oh, boy. Oh, we have to nine oh eight.
Boy, wait until you're, your portfolio down there, Gene. It's gonna be half an hour of speech.
I, running that, um, I should have asked Terry again. I like him giving a report, but I don't, I don't think there's any changes to the, uh, Sheriff's Department. State's attorney, they're busy today. It's, um, court date. I spoke with the clerk of court. Things are going fine there, and water bowl, whatever, whatever Mercer County economic development. I have been to a meeting lately, so I have no updates. Liza?
I think most of mine are just working on their budgets and their requests that are coming in. Um, I don't have ambulance until next Monday, so I don't have update on that one right now. Um, I know at one point I had talked to, um, Ron at the Veterans Department, and he was thinking about potentially putting in some different ideals for possibly only working one day a week, but I'm not sure if he decided to put that in or not. So I'm not sure where he's at on that, and I think we know, um, Carmen had said before about what she was gonna be putting in for a, a new employee, and then that G S I, I think it's her G I S program, G I S program. She was looking into, so we'd be looking at possibly something with that, and, um, the only thing I know is that the Sheriff's Department did hire another jailer, so they do have another jailer. Just so you know.
Uh, that, the position they requested to be filled?
Yep.
I'm not, I can't say definitively, but I think the person turned down the offer.
Oh, they did? Okay. I heard that they had.
But I, I could, I could be wrong, but I talked to Terry this morning, and if we're talking the same position, there, there was a, a person that turned it down, turned down a job offer at Mercer County.
Okay.
So they're gonna put it back out again.
Okay.
Anything else, Liza?
Nope.
Wayne?
Short and sweet, yeah. Well, I don't have much to report on. It's kind of like Liza's said, was saying, uh, the airport authority, we worked on the, uh, uh, upcoming budget of twenty twenty-three. And, uh, things are doing well there. Of course, we got a fly-in. I believe it's July second, if that's a Saturday.
Yep.
So if you're bored on July second, come out for lunch and look at the airplane and look at the runway and, and visit with whoever you can visit with. There should be lots of people there. And, uh, starts at about seven, seven-thirty, somewhere in that area in the morning, so, and will run until, I suppose, one or whatever, one, one-thirty. And, uh, so there'll be some, uh. See, I, I. So why, why didn't you stop me earlier?
Now he's got it covered.
He's got it covered.
Morning.
And, um, and then the, uh, weed board didn't, uh, they had some issues with, with the, uh, budget there, so they'll get that straightened out here, uh, in the next meeting, I think, real shortly here, and, and work that through. I did, I should have wrote it down. I was at social service the other day. I believe we got some indirect costs that are coming. It's about twenty-seven thousand dollars, and I usually forget to mention that. But, uh, that will be coming to Mercer County from, from, uh, Dakota Central or from, uh, Washburn. Does that sound, sound about right? Girls, ladies? Did you get a check recently? Dakota Central?
I haven't seen it yet.
Oh? Anyhow, you should be getting a check around twenty. I'll check back with you guys. It should be around twenty-seven thousand for, um, for Mercer County, so. And, um, who did I forget? I think that's it.
Okay. Well, thank you.
You're welcome.
Now, we can play Jeopardy music until nine thirty, I got a feeling, so.
Yeah, and I forgot, yeah, Jim is at home at the time, so he'll be there for, oh, it's probably a good seven days, right?
I believe Monday he'll be able to come back, yeah.
Yeah, if, if everything goes good, so.
So if we can just have some open discussion here, um, does anybody know anything about the auction house?
Oh.
Have we heard any updates on that? I was gonna ask Jim this morning.
No, I sent out a letter to the gentleman who was interested to submit a, you know, written, uh, proposal. He hasn't gotten anything back to us.
Did, yeah.
And then, um, and I'm gonna jump all over the place.
Okay.
Um, have we heard, has anyone heard anything about the updates on the landfill, the expansion? Are they done with that, or?
I have not heard if they've finished. I know that the last time I talked with Candy, they were really working in the process of it, so I haven't checked if they rounded it off yet or not.
That's what I heard. They're like, I, I, I thought I heard the word, it's completed for the, the, um, cells, what, is it four and five?
Uh-huh.
That I hear they're.
It should be six and seven, cells six and seven.
Oh, is it that far up, cells?
Yeah.
Whatever. Anyway, the.
They're waiting for a letter from the state, right, to?
I was gonna say, I remember from the account that it is completed, and there just, what's left now is getting the certification.
Final approval, kind of.
That's, wasn't I?
Right, yeah, yep.
I know that she did mention that since the cells are complete, though, that she can't have a lot of exposed, uh, refuse, so they are worried now. The state is worried and cautious that they don't want to prove it until there's some, uh, dirt to fill.
Or, okay.
To cover.
Cover, right.
Yeah.
Okay, I wa- I wasn't asking for any, because we've got time. I just opened discussion here. Guess we are next, we're done with our other business. Next item is at nine thirty, so I guess if anyone has anything else they want to talk about, we'll just recess till nine thirty. All right, we'll recess till nine thirty.
Well, I, I'll, I'll have to check and see what people have or isn't available for the fly-in.
Oh.
I don't think there isn't available. Um, is there any, uh, airport group?
Uh, you know, uh, maybe Ron, I mean, Ron.
Yeah.
Ron moved, maybe.
Oh.
Probably just.
Guys have any questions?
So the seven thousand, one hundred and twenty-five is, is, um, actually extra cost than what you'd originally budgeted, Carmen, or is that?
Actually, I never technically budgeted for this.
Oh, okay.
I was waiting on the grant, so yeah, it did go over my line item.
Okay.
I don't think it'll go over my total budget, but I didn't actually budget it out.
Okay.
But, uh, yeah, but the twenty-eight thousand, five hundred, I'm looking at, that would be the total budgeting expense.
And will it look worse? I mean, will, will we be able to see the results from the feds giving back money, or will it look worse at first?
Okay, I went over that line item, but I still don't think I'm gonna go over my overall, but.
Okay.
But yeah, we'll be able to see that.
I just want to make sure everybody understands that it's gonna look kind of weird and crazy, but we're still getting monies back from the feds for it and.
Again, you know, our budgets only show the expenditures. It doesn't show the other side of that coin for the feds, what it came in. If Carmen wouldn't say anything, we wouldn't know.
Right, then we'd be like, how come you're so far over your budget? But I just want to make sure everybody understands that that's because we're gonna get some other monies coming in in return.
And that's a pretty good reimbursement. I mean, no doubt.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
All right, any, anything else?
Can work.
Nope, thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Carmen.
Okay, I guess we'll recess till ten forty-five. Sure.
Got who?
Yeah, just, okay, we'll wait. Darby will come in. We'll get the treasure report, get that done. Might as well.
Two, two minutes and less.
Pardon?
Two minutes and less. Yeah, she's got time, yeah.
Right, thanks, Alice.
Is she on the way?
Yeah, two minutes.
Yeah, I don't think there's, um, a problem with having that earlier.
Uh, for the board's information, you know, I had requested some trees taken out on twenty, Twenty-third Street here a while back. Well, they did get that cleaned, them big branches or them big trees out of there, and, uh, which was real good, and, uh, they did, uh, they pulled the shoulder on the rest of sixteen all the way to the county line. And that was real good, uh, finally, uh, so the only part that I was a little concerned is I gotta, there were branches still laying on the road that they drove around. I gotta go back with a four-wheeler or somebody and hook on and pull them to designated area for my, get them off of there. But I had, you know, I think five outfits that I seen the other day that went by and, and a couple of horse trailers, and that's what my concern is. You go in there with a horse trailer, how are you gonna get backed out of there, so? I probably went a little overboard, but I was just trying to get safety of the public, if not, then the guy, they need. I probably went a little overboard, but I was just trying to get safety of the public, if not, then they need to state it out, out front on the road, that we got debris on the road or something, or unsafe or something.
To limit it.
Yeah, yeah, so, so they did get there.
Those trees were in the right of way.
Oh, yeah, yeah, oh, yeah.
Yeah, that's a safe.
Naturally.
Safety concern right there, yeah.
Yeah.
Pardon?
Can't just let the.
Okay.
Okay, yeah. So.
What's that?
We're not gonna have an hour-long recess?
Uh, hopefully not, cause, uh, there's really, Ken's is mostly a report, there's not, uh, I don't see any public input that would be needed there, so I don't see a reason we couldn't have that earlier.
Sure.
Darby gonna make it?
Is that like a moment?
Yeah. Few seconds.
And it's, you're all well aware of, sad to know that Larry Morris' wife passed away, I see, Wanda Knut, uh, Wanda Morris, Larry the lead man?
Relative of mine.
Oh, what, on the Morris side, or?
Yep.
Oh.
Grandma Wolf was a Morris.
Boy.
There's not too many people I'm not related to.
Boy, I'm glad I didn't see much of them.
Yeah, better talk nice. I'm related.
Morning, Darby.
I'm related to the Morris, the Weidricks.
Everybody.
Yep. Okay, Darby, you got the floor.
This is all there is to me.
This is it.
Big bunch.
Why, do you want more? Or maybe we should say it this way, this is all you get.
Thank you.
Yep, just barely, but we got it.
Yeah, just barely.
I think Travis.
Thank you, Darby.
Travis is gonna show up eventually, he had a engagement he had to be at. So you can, you, if you got one for Travis, lay it there, cause who knows, he, he should be showing up. He figured by ten.
If he didn't get a ticket.
Yeah.
Frank, you get your own.
Yeah.
I think he was on sale, I guess. Do you wanna start these?
Okay, I can.
You, you can steal, you can take Travis's for a little bit.
Okay, this is from June first, of course, ending May thirty-first, so, um, this sheet here. Um, shows that we have ten million four hundred and fifty-two thousand seven ninety-nine forty-two, that's our ending balance for May. And then the other sheet shows your, um, total receipts for the month of May, total payments. And as you can see, we're fifty-four thousand four thirty-three fifty-two overspent for the January, for your receipts versus your payments. Which is normal, for us, we need to go down. You had one point two million in payments and seven hundred and sixty-three thousand in receipts. In money in.
Is there usually a month that we go back up again a bit, Darby?
Probably December, but you'll be getting in in the years.
Oh, yeah.
The taxes that are for the next coming year, right?
Follow week budget.
Okay.
As a curiosity, what are the, the receipts?
The money coming in.
Right, what, you've gotten most of the taxes already, so where is the?
Oh, your state payments.
You say.
Yeah. State highway.
Yeah.
You know, state aid, that kind of stuff.
Do utilities, do they come like monthly, or?
No, they, they come.
That way too?
Are you talking like state aid in those, like cold severance in those?
Yeah.
That what you're talking about?
You too. See, we get cold severance and cold.
Convergent.
That's all.
That's all, yeah.
Yeah, okay, yeah, monthly.
Any more questions? Okay, thank you. Oh, okay.
I, it is with deep regret that I am resigning effective August fifth.
Oh.
Since April twenty-eighth, commission meeting, it has become quite clear that loyalty and experience and knowledge of the county government is not what you guys are looking for. So, over the years, I've been bullied, badgered, lied about and put down. And since I've decided not to run again, um, I'm just, I'm, I'm gonna leave early.
Okay.
I wish to thank all my supporters and friends. I've made sense becoming treasurer, I love my job, and I feel I've done it to the best of my ability, this office has been transparent, honest and dedicated to serving the public with respect and quality, which I feel I do no longer get from you guys, so, I am. And I would like you to appoint Dawn, she's running unopposed. And, um, she will need to hire somebody, cause I'm not, I will be done, I will help Dawn out all I can.
Did you say August fifth?
Yes.
Right?
She'll need to hire somebody, she'll have to get somebody in here to help her with, um, tax, estimate statements. Which will be a big job. I'll be here to help her, but. But also don't call me out, I may come back in some other form.
Well, I'm sorry to see you go, but, um, I never begrudge anyone or hold it against them that they, um, move on or retire, and, cause I'm one who retired, and so I, I've enjoyed it, so I never tell anyone, uh, hold that against them, so, I'm just saying, sorry to hear, see that you're going.
You have that. This will be my last, the rest will be up to Dawn. She will.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Darby.
Thank you, Darb.
So we formally have not received her resignation, have we? Okay, until then, there's nothing to discuss, we, we didn't, we need to have, have formally received that. Okay. We'll recess until, uh, can I say until Ken Miller gets here and we're all here?
Yeah.
So no later than ten forty-five, we'll put it that way. So either we'll recess until the commissioners have returned, ever's first, thank you.
Just turn them off?
I might.
Stretch a little bit, yeah.
Yeah.